Meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, May 15, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Nupalitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have a board planner, Ms. Winters, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right. If we could stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its citizens, our 领土, which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody in the public that has something they'd like to bring to the attention of this board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we move on. We have two resolutions. Do I have volunteers to move the resolutions for Pomeroy Road and Lanedex?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve the resolution for an area in need of redevelopment, 249 Pomeroy Road, block 737, lot 3.
Second, that each.
Mr. Didich, thank you. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Here.
Math.
Yes.
Nupalitano.
Yep.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Do I have a volunteer for the Lanedex?
Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve for area need for, need of redevelopment, 20-30 Lanedex Plaza, block 226, lots 3 and 3.2.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Councilman DiPiero. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Nupalitano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right. That brings us to our agenda for tonight. We're going to call application number 23:508 Interstate Office Center LP and 8 Wood Hollow Road, block 736.1, lot 1, Zone SED 5 slash OVL 7, preliminary and final major site plan for a boutique hotel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals and the public. My name is John Anglaccino. I'm an attorney with the law firm Anglaccino Taylor located here in Precipiny. We represent the applicant this evening, Interstate Office Center LP, who has applied for preliminary and final major site plan for a real estate property located at 8 Wood Hollow Road and also known, as the chairman said, as Lot 1 and Lot 736.1 on the tax map of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills. The property is located in the SED 5 Zone District and the OVL 7 Overlay Zone District. As you know, the mayor and council have identified the need to repurpose struggling office buildings to provide tax ratables, jobs, and services for the benefit of Precipiny residents and taxpayers. In furtherance of that policy initiative, on December 20th of 2022, the Township Council adopted ordinance number 2022-39, amending the township zoning ordinance to permit boutique hotels as a conditional use in the SED 5 Zone District and the OVL 7 Overlay Zone District. Here, the applicant seeks to convert this nearly empty three-story 65,000-square-foot office building into a 101-room boutique luxury hotel with amenities, including a restaurant, meeting rooms, and a fitness facility. The footprint of the existing building will not change. Surface area parking will not change. Testimony will demonstrate compliance with the requisite conditions. There are no variances being sought in connection with this application, and as such, it's an as right application. The applicant has entered into a lease with a luxury boutique hotel operator, namely Independent Hospitality LLC, whose principal is George DeFoni, and he will be one of our witnesses. We have one board report issued by ARH Associates dated May 9th of 2023. All issues identified in that report will be addressed through testimony from our witnesses. We have three witnesses, Mr. Chairman. We have Paul Anderson, who is the project engineer, and if necessary, though we don't think it will be necessary, but if necessary, he will also be the project planner. So when we have him qualified, we'll have him qualified as both. John Van Lenton, who is the project architect, and George DeFoni, who is the principal of the, of the hotel operator. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Paul Anderson.
I'd like to ask one question of our planner, Ms. Winter. Do we have any, any waivers that should be voted on by the board at this time?
Yeah.
Oh, some waivers, yes.
Waivers. Number of waivers. Many of them are related to the fact that it's an existing building. So they're asking for a waiver for the sod elevations and roof plan, sign plans, the storm drainage improvements, landscaping plans, temporary contractors' construction structures. They're also asking for a waiver from the traffic study. We asked that testimony be provided for that, that it would be, generates less traffic than the current building use. And then, sorry, and the environmental assessment study they are also asking for a waiver from, and simple one combined, the final approval will be submitted on separate sheets. And we have no objection to that either.
Right. And again, well, if you want to vote on the waivers now, that would be great.
That's the way we usually work.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Is there any, are there any questions by the board on the waivers? Is there anything in the ARH report of what date?
May 9th.
May 9th that people would like to question before we vote on these waivers? Hearing and seeing none.
Well, on page seven, there's a variance required for parking, the size of parking space.
So the variance identified is one of the handicap spots in the details, an eight by 18. I believe that is going to provide testimony that the spots are actually nine by 18.
Larger than what's required.
If you'd like to swear in and be qualified, I'll talk about any of the open issues on the board.
All, all we're asking your attorney right now is to represent that you're going to, you're going to give us information about that.
And he, and he will. We, we believe that a variance will not be required because we're exceeding the minimal requirement of the space for handicaps.
Okay.
So that will be dealt with intestally?
Correct.
Great. Do I have a motion approving the waivers as outlined in the ARH Associates' report of May 9th, 2023?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Now we can swear in your witnesses and you can present your case.
Okay.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Please state your names, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Paul W. Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, and my address is 40 Miller Drive in Booton Township, New Jersey.
Yeah, just pull it closer, okay?
Pull it closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Anderson, just, wouldn't it qualify you? We're going to try to qualify Mr. Anderson as both a, an engineer and a planner, just in case planning testimony is needed, which we don't. Mr. Anderson, can you please provide the board with your professional background, your educational background, and any licenses that you possess?
Certainly. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, Clarkson University, 1983. Licensed as a professional engineer in 1988. My license, engineering license is current, in good standing. I've been practicing civil engineering and been accepted before boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including here in Precipiny over the years. I can't recall the last application I was here. I do remember one of the first ones was the Cinema 12 across the street when they actually built that. So that gives you an idea of when I started providing testimony before Precipiny.
I remember that one. Go on.
What's that?
I remember that one.
Do you? As far as the planning, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey by examination, and I've been licensed as a planner for approximately the last 13 years, and I've provided testimony on C and D variances throughout the state of New Jersey and been accepted as an expert in planning.
So, Mr. Chairman, we respectfully request that Mr. Anderson be considered an expert in the area of civil engineering and planning.
Are there any questions and/or objections to, hearing and seeing none?
Just one quick question. You did say there's no variances, right?
We did.
So then what do we need a planner for?
I said if needed.
I said if needed.
No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, I won't go through with it.
Yeah. All right. So, Mr. Anderson, if you can provide the engineering aspects and traffic aspects of the application, and as you're going through your testimony, you know, please also address stormwater and the need for stormwater, or not need for stormwater, and, and also traffic.
Okay. So on the board behind me, obviously, behind me, is the site plan that was submitted as part of the application.
And that's the actual site plan going up without anything marked on it?
Yeah, it's, it's actually at the same scale, so exactly as submitted. If you'd like to put it as exhibit anyway, I can certainly mark it. It's your choice.
That's okay. Only new, new documents will be marked.
Okay. And then, let me also get these on the record, too. I have a brief presentation, photographs I'd like to hand out. Exhibit A1.
Yeah, why don't we mark that as exhibit A1? And, Mr. Anderson, can you describe what's in A1?
So in A1.
When you get back to the microphone, please.
Yes, when you get back to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So A1 is basically a five-sheet compilation, primarily photographs of the site with some notes on, on the side, photographs that I took of the site within the last few weeks. Oh, a few weeks ago, the trees are not completely out, as you'll see in there, but they're starting. Now they're out. All right. So, as John pointed out, it's in the SED 5 Zone, the OLV 7 Overlay District, which permits the boutique hotels. It's approximately a three-acre property, and currently it's set up for an office building, but is underutilized, very, very much becoming a vacant building. It has frontage, as you can see on the site plan, on Illinois, and on Smith, and then Wood Hollow on the left side of the, of the site plan. It's an existing office building that is four stories from the basement, and is to be fit up with 101-room boutique hotel. You look in A1, the first photograph on the second page, shows a picture of the existing building from across the street by the Sheraton Tower. Took it from their parking lot. Can't see in this photograph, but the park, the property has 153 parking spaces. It's developed with lighting, landscaping, and I'd say it's 50% vacant, but I think that's a changing number. The next photograph is a picture of the monument sign that is off the Wood Hollow Road entrance that's going to be refaced. The applicant does not propose any new signage with this application, so that's why you're not hearing or seeing any details about signage this evening and why we requested a waiver for that. The next photograph is a photograph from the rear of the building. You can see that the main entrance of the building is behind the middle of that landscaping, between the two architectural features that go vertically. You can see that it's fully landscaped. We do not propose any new landscaping to supplement what is already there, and that's why we are requesting the, the waiver for landscaping plans and details. The last photograph is the rear of the building from what I would call the main parking lot, which is the parking lot in the back here, as shown on the, on the site plan. Again, the, the main entrance is behind the clump of trees, but it's between the two vertical elements. You can see in this, in the middle of this photograph, there is a tall light fixture, and it has a fairly vintage, high-energy-using light on it, and part of our application is to do, probably do with a building permit, but change to LED lights, which are all dark sky compliant, focusing down, and providing uniform light over the parking lot and using less energy. And we do have a land, a lighting plan in our set that was submitted to the board. You can see from, with regard to the storm drainage issue that we were talking about before, the property is all developed. We are not proposing any new parking areas or significant pavement or anything impervious. There is no, there is minimal disturbance. We have disturbance associated with the dumpster and with the location of EV charging stations, but there really is no other disturbance. So that does not meet the criteria for a major stormwater permit for one acre of disturbance. Additionally, there is no new impervious, so we don't meet that prong of the test either. So in, you know, this is not a major stormwater application. There's nothing to do, and we're just going to rely on the existing collection and detention system that is on the property. And that's why we had requested a waiver for that. With regard to the traffic element, we have gone over the ITE trip generation for general office, which is what I would categorize this for, the office building, and we looked at also hotels in two, two ways, just a business hotel and, and more of a, just a different regular hotel. And we found that there is a reduction in the peak hour traffic flow with the hotels of, it's fairly minor, but there is going from 84 total in the AM peak with an office to 46 or 36. So depending on how you categorize the office, it's a minor reduction in the AM peak, and the PM peak, it goes from 79 to 60 or 31. So again, a minor reduction in the traffic. And based on this, I don't believe a traffic study with a reduction in traffic is warranted. So that's why, that's the, how we are, why we are requesting a waiver for a full traffic study. And what else?
Why don't you touch on parking?
Sure. So we have a parking, existing parking lot with 153 parking spaces. The application, actually based on the numbers in the new ordinance, requires, excuse me, 120 parking spaces. So we have an excess of parking spaces. With the parking spaces, we have added seven EV parking, charging stations in this location here, and we will re-straight and sign the ADA spaces in this location because some of those are out of date. They need to be updated placards with the latest information, penalty signs. So that's why you have that, you know, on the plan. The circulation on site will remain the same. It functions well for, you know, small delivery vehicles, which is all we expect with this application, at the largest of box truck. And there is a pull-up here where they can, they can pull up and unload for the restaurant, and the, the operator will testify in terms of how many times a week he will have these trucks coming. It's fairly minimal, and they can, you know, they can circulate throughout the site. They don't have to go in any particular way. There's no impediment to the traffic movement of past your cars or, or trucks. We have proposed a dumpster enclosure in the back. There currently are a few dumpsters in the back without an enclosure, and they sit back there nicely, but we thought it would be nicer to have an enclosure with a fence around it, make it a little bit more orderly. And that's really the limit of the site improvements in addition to the lights that I discussed.
Well, the EV spaces, you said there's seven EV space, EV parking spaces, correct?
That's correct.
And that's required by state statute?
Yes. And that is something that we have, we have taken credit for in the plan. You get credit for one parking, you have two parking spaces for one. So without the EV spaces, we would have a requirement of 127. We still have 153. So even with, we would make it without the credit.
And you have Mrs. Winters' memo from May 9th, correct?
I do.
Let's just go through a couple of items here. Turn to page three.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Are there any wetlands or wetland buffers on the property?
There are not.
Okay. On page four. Now, with respect to the, the existing monument sign, is the plan that if there is signage for the, for the hotel, if it's conforming, they'll work with the building department. If, if not, then they'll have to come back to the board, correct?
That's correct.
But there's no change in connection with this application?
That is correct.
With regard to temporary contractors' construction structures and storage for the proposed new tenant fit-up, can you tell the board whether there's any, anything that will be required in that regard?
Well, it's not a new building. It's a, it's a fit-up of, really, fit-up of the, the existing building. So the, the owner has indicated that he doesn't need construction trailers or storage areas associated with this. He done made a day and would not need to locate temporary trailers for the construction
Okay. I don't have any more questions for this witness.
Any other waiver issues or any other parts of your report?
I think you touched on them all.
I think, I think you did, but if not, I'm sure you will be asked.
Oh, the rooftop. In the original application, it did mention a rooftop lounge. Is that still part of the plan?
No.
Not, not currently. We, we could not get a plan together for how we were going to do it, so we decided to withdraw that from the application.
So if there's a, a vision for a rooftop amenity, that will have to be subject of a subsequent application, not part of this application.
Any members of the board? Mr. Math?
Yeah, but I guess about three different questions. I guess I've noticed the plan that's up there, you seem to have one more revision note than we have. What's the date of that plan? Just out of curiosity. I've got one that's last revised, 2/16/23.
23. 4/24/23.
Okay, because, yeah, my version doesn't have anything on EVs. That's why I was kind of curious.
I believe I dropped revised plans off to the plan. Yep.
There only would have been enough for?
Enough for full distribution.
I'm tied.
Our planner has, has an official copy.
Okay. So how many ADA spots do you have on site? Because I only see two in the plan I've got.
There's some around the other side. There's one, two, three, there's actually four. I got, I got four. There's two, there's two opposite of the ones that are actually have the wheelchair symbol in it, which, so we'd have to add the wheelchair symbol, but there, there's four spaces there.
But wouldn't you be required for 153 spots to have sex?
So I, I might have to put some over by the EV spots, which is probably one of your next questions. We don't have EV charging for the ADA spaces. So directly across from that, we would add the two more with the one that would get our parking count down to 152.
Okay. I mean, you're still over parks. And I guess all spaces are nine by 18, correct, except for the ADA spots?
Yeah, the ADA spots are actually striped as nine by 18 right now, which is part of the, without the, the, the waiver for parking space size.
Well, because my understanding is the full width of the space is really 13 minimum. It's just that it's striped with eight feet for the space and five feet for the aisle.
Well, yeah, it has to be striped with the access aisle.
Right.
With five feet, five foot minimum, but you need certain van accessible, and it doesn't hurt to have extra van accessible.
No, I appreciate that.
So I was just going to use the van accessible on, on the two new ones that I was talking about, and the other, other four actually all have to be van accessible spaces.
Okay. I do appreciate that you've got stop lines and stop bars to protect that center aisle. But is the first aisle, as you're approaching Pomeroy Road, is that two-way?
Uh, it, it is, but you have to make a left turn on the Pomeroy.
Well, I get, no, I guess what we're getting at is that first aisle where you have your two wheelchair-marked spaces. Shouldn't there be a stop line and stop bar there, too? Yeah, stop sign.
Uh, yeah. You, you certainly could do that. It's not a one-way, which is kind of.
Right, that was the whole point.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, we could, we can add an extra stop bar there.
And the other thing is, this is transferring to a hotel. That whole access aisle is pretty straight. I'm kind of thinking that, would you be amenable to putting a crosswalk across for the people who park in this area to designate a crossing spot?
Sure.
Marking a crosswalk with appropriate signage?
Where do you think it should go, across from?
The, the most ideal place, I mean, probably the ideal would be to connect your ADA spots to it.
Yeah.
But, I mean, really, because you get that pull-out, I would imagine trying to get around that pull-out would be your answer. I could just see that full of people pulling up to check in or whatever, drop off luggage.
Probably diagonally towards the, the front door.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just more worried about the fact that the aisle has no real interruption to traffic. And, I mean, it's one thing when it's an office building, it's another thing when you got guests coming in and who aren't familiar with it.
That's correct. Yes, I agree.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
We'll, we'll agree to include those comments in the plan.
And could we just clarify, where was the stop bar going to be added additional?
There's an aisle that is right by the two marked ADA spots in the plan. It just doesn't have the stop line and stop bar, the stop sign.
Other members of the board?
I haven't, I haven't.
Mr. Mealy, first.
Mr. Anderson, I think you mentioned that the monument sign would be refaced. Does that mean it will be enlarged? And if so, what, to what size?
Same size, different letters.
Same size?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nupalitano.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Just out of curiosity, could you define what a boutique hotel is?
I, I will let the operator.
All right. Sounds good. I also share some concern, Mr. Mathier. So usually when you pull up to a hotel, you're like right in front of the door, and you kind of like drop your bags off. I guess that's why I want to know what a boutique hotel is, what's different than a regular hotel. Is this road too far away to just, to walk in the front door and check in and leave your bags?
Is it too far away? No, I, I mean, for some, not, not for me, but not for some, maybe.
Okay, but it's, I guess that's my point, then. Boutique hotel doesn't have to have roadway right in front of the hotel?
It doesn't have to have a drop-off like across the street of the tower.
Okay.
No. In fact, I, I, this is a good setup. It's, it's more unique once you're checked in. It's going to be a very unique experience, and I will, I'll let George tell you about that.
All right. And then in the picture of your A1 here, so is the all-glass part, is that the three stories? And then I guess the concrete works is the basement? Is that how, I guess the four stories?
That's, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other members, Mr. Didich?
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. I'm not sure if there is a requirement about how far an ADA parking should be from the entrance, but I feel like it's too far at this moment. So any thoughts on that?
Well, it's supposed to be the nearest accessible entrance, and that, those are the.
part, is that the three stories, and then I guess the concrete works is the basement? Is that how, I guess the four stories?
That's, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other members, Mr. Zadich?
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. I'm not sure if there is a requirement about how far an ADA parking should be from the entrance, but I feel like it's too far at this moment. So any thoughts on that?
Well, it's supposed to be the nearest accessible entrance, and that, those are the nearest accessible points. In the other parking lot, it can come into the lower area, but it would be, it would not be for the main entrance. It would feel like you're relegating the ADA, the people who required ADA to a back door. And it also has slope issues in the lower parking lot that wouldn't be compliant to the slope requirements of the ADA parking space. So I think, for better or worse, those are the best locations for it.
Okay.
And that's where they were before, this we're going to continue and supplement.
And so on, just on that, since they're going to add at least two more, right, than what you have?
Two more, so...
Right, so could we do it on the other side, right? At least get closer, yeah?
Yeah, I would also propose them here. Same access aisle space.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony? Mr. Kenji Ano?
Yeah, I just have a few. Yeah, the site plan that I have too is not the, is the unrevised one, and it wasn't really clear on what was being proposed, the EV and the ADA upgrades, so thank you for the time. But now you're saying that the ADA is over on the south side, the other side, as well as the north side of the building, the main parking lot side. I don't, is there an access route where you're pointing out on the smaller lot? You pointed to a few ADA spaces on the small lot.
No, I don't, I don't think there is any over here. There was, but I...
Your six spaces, I guess I'll just get the point, your six spaces are in the main lot?
In the main lot, the nearest location.
That's fine. And then I see that you have, there's an ADA, it's like a brick paver, ADA ramp, flush curb that comes off the, you know, comes off the pavement over there. Just as a condition, I would say just have during construction, have that checked and measured. If it's not in compliance, upgrade the ramp to be in compliance.
Absolutely.
It's a small, small upgrade, it would just be the matter of a little bit of sidewalk.
And we want to be fully compliant.
And the EV, so, and again, so I would say for a planned revision, as a condition of approval, upgrade the striking plan to include the required six ADA spaces, the accessible route and crosswalk we talked about a moment ago, the EV spaces. And they don't have to be, they can be make ready, if you're aware of that. You don't have, need to make six, you can make make ready spaces. And then as far as other items, are there any changes to any of your services, water or sewer lines?
No.
Any need for grease traps or anything of that?
I don't know of the existing conditions on a grease trap. The mechanical engineer would probably design that inside the building. In terms of the water and sewer flow, they're very similar to what's there today. The building is currently fully sprinklered, it has a six inch water main connection that comes into the building and then splits to domestic. So we have plenty of water coming into the building. We don't need to have any service modifications.
And a similar flow for the same, you said it was 65,000 square foot building?
Approximately, yeah, yeah, and then we have 101 rooms.
Yeah, okay. So you anticipate a sewer extension permit?
No.
Okay. And the lighting you commented on, so it's existing halls and bases, and the light fixtures being upgraded to the LED fixtures shown in the plan?
That's correct.
And the heights, I see you call out the heights are 18 foot and 12 foot. Is that the existing heights, or they maintain existing height?
Yes, yeah, we're not changing the heights.
I think that was it, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you, Chairman. So this restaurant that's going to be there, is it going to offer takeout food? And should there be, you know, those like 15 minute spots or pickup only or something like that?
I don't believe that is the case. I think that's more of a question for the operator.
Operations, okay. And then maybe operations again, but this says the building here is 50% vacant?
That...
So what's happened to the people that are actually in there? All those, are they all leaving?
A lot of them are very short term and leaving.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Zadich?
Yeah, a quick follow-up on the EV stations. So any, will any of these ADA parking spot have any EV facilities?
Any of which?
ADA parkings.
Well, yes, that's one of the things I was just mentioning. As I add the two additional ADA spaces, I would be adding them in the location where the EV parking spaces are, so now we have them covered also.
Okay.
I just want to comment on that. You can't double dip, you have to have the ADA and then accessible EV charging stations separate from the ADA. Oh, yeah, that's the, they're both accessible, but only the ADA spaces with a non-EV are the ADA and the...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So it's just a matter of widening your EV space to account for accessibility.
Well, we actually, okay, I don't think we have too much of a modification on that. Maybe we have to add an extra fit up for...
It's come up before.
Given that new information, you still have more than sufficient parking to meet the requirements?
That's correct.
Okay. And just one question about the trash enclosure. What is the front gate going to look like?
Right now, I have it as a block around the, around the three sides and a wooden, two wooden gates.
Okay. I would just suggest the condition be that solid wooden gate then?
Okay.
Or vinyl, but a solid gate?
Yeah, I would be okay with vinyl too. Right now, I think we have it in the detail as wood, but...
Okay, either is fine.
We're not stuck on either one. I just wanted to get loose dumpsters into an enclosure to make it look a little bit more orderly.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Anderson. This time, we'd like to call Mr. John Van Letten, who's the project architect.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
John Van Letten. D is Victor English. Space of L E M. Yes. Address is P O Box 391, New Jersey, 085.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Letten, can you provide the board with your educational and professional background in architecture and apprise the board of any licenses that you possess?
Sure. Graduated college in 1988.
Why don't you sit down, use the mic?
Graduated in college in 1988, bachelor of architecture degree, became licensed in 1993. Been practicing architecture ever since, mixed use, residential, commercial.
Have you testified before boards?
Yes, several.
Planning boards, and you've been accepted in New Jersey before planning boards of a living?
Yes.
Approximately how many?
I had to guess, seven or eight.
And you have an architect's license in New Jersey?
Yes.
And that license is valid?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We respectfully submit Mr. Van Letten as an expert in the area of architecture.
Just have one question, because I've never had anybody come before me before and say they graduated from college and didn't tell me which college.
Oh, New York Institute of Technology in Long Island, Westbury, exactly.
Okay, just, I've never had that happen before.
MIT, so...
You know, I thought, you know, something happened that you weren't happy with them or something.
No, that was great education, very satisfied.
All right, any questions about the architect and his bona fides at this point? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Van Letten. Can you describe for the board the architectural features of the project?
Sure, the existing building characteristics, occupancy classification is B, business use, building construction type is B, 2B unprotected, non-combustible, fire resistant, ratings for structural members, columns, beams, girders, more construction and roof construction for zero hours. The existing building height is three stories plus one basement level, approximately 40 feet in height off the average grade plane elevation. The maximum permitted height, based on my analysis, is 75 feet, four stories permitted. Existing floor areas, first floor, second floor, third floor, are each 13,213 square feet. Now, that's measured to the inside base of the perimeter walls, not to the exterior, which may differ from Mr. Anderson's calculations. That excludes the basement, because under section 50613, in the New Jersey International Building Code, the basement elevation would be, floor area could be omitted from that calculation as long as that floor area doesn't exceed the maximum floor area of an allowable one-story building, which in this case would have been 6,000, oh, 69,000 square feet, which it certainly doesn't. Fire suppression systems throughout the building are currently fully sprinklered. The plan is to maintain them, augment them, modify them as necessary to accommodate current use and configuration of the interior built out. Fire and smoke protection systems are present throughout the building. Again, they'll be augmented, modified, and expanded as necessary to accommodate the proposed use. Proposed building characteristics, occupancy classification is R1 residential hotel. I'll allow George to talk about what boutique hotel is. There's proposed, 101 proposed guest rooms ranging between 205 square feet and 500 square feet. There'll be seven ADA required units, guest rooms based on the code requirements. Of those, five will have rolling showers. The other two are not required to have rolling showers. Building classification type remains the same, 2B unprotected, non-combustible, same fire resistant ratings for all structural components. Height doesn't change, floor area doesn't change. I think it's going to, go through the accessory uses. Basement is conference center, maximum allowed based on the ordinance that was granted, is 2,250 square feet. That's based on 15 square feet each net for a chair, so 150 chairs is maximum. You can see they've calculated the floor area to be 2,250. There's going to be a basement, this room approximately 300 square feet at 50 square feet gross, and that's six people. Basement, hotel operations offices approximately 600 square feet at 150 square feet gross, four persons. Basement, dedicated workspace office spaces which were allowed by the ordinance, a total of 1,500 square feet at 150 square feet for gross, that's 10 persons maximum. There's basement, this ladies' spaces, storage for the kitchen, mechanical spaces, electrical closet, elevator room, boiler room, that are going to remain, so that needs to put a bit of the square footage in the basement. First floor restaurant, 2,200 square feet, that's again based on the ordinance, which is allowed, that's 15 square feet net each per person for 150 square chairs maximum. First floor commercial kitchen, estimated to be about 500 square feet, 200 square feet gross, that's three people. And first floor convenience retail, we're proposing 40, when the ordinance allows 500.
I have no further questions.
You have no further questions. Always wait for the counselor to ask his further questions. Are any questions by members of the board and the architect? Mr. Napolitano?
I know nothing about hotels. But there are only two rules for housekeeping for the entire hotel, and they're on the basement floor. Is that right?
There's no need for housekeeping on every floor. There is a room for servicing, which will be provided on every floor.
Okay, so housekeeping has to be on every floor. Like I said, I don't know anything about hotels.
No, it's storage in every area, as long as there's no comments, the need.
Thanks.
Any other members of the board have any questions on this witness? Nope, our professionals, do you have any questions, Mr. Kenji Ano?
No.
Nothing else? All right, are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Inglis, no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Van Letten, I'd like to call Mr. George Tifoni. Mr. Tifoni is here, not, not as an expert, but he will be the operator of the, of the tenant slash operator of the, of the new hotel. So we wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask questions of him, and, well, I guess he'll be providing testimony with regard to, general testimony with regard to the operations of the hotel, and also here to address any operational type questions that the board may have. I assumed you would, and I've heard a few already, so we wanted to make him available.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
D F O U N I, that's 75 Cheyenne Way, it's in Rainy, Virginia, 0747.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Tifoni, if you can, just give the board a little information about yourself, about the boutique luxury hotel product that you're going to be offering, what makes it boutique, what makes it luxury, so the board has an idea of the, of the business that you're going to be conducting here in Pacific.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. First, I've been in this business for approximately 30 years, I'm going to date myself now. I've worked in Europe, New York, Miami, Charlotte, operating, working for large branded hotels and the boutique hotel market. The boutique hotel market came into fruition back in the 90s in New York by Ian Schreger. He opened up the first boutique hotel. And what's a boutique hotel? It's usually 100 rooms or less. However, a lot of the brands right now, they're using the term boutique hotel very loosely, and everybody has boutique hotels. So they call it boutique hotels, like 300 plus rooms, it's a boutique hotel. It's not. It's basically going to a department store or going to a small boutique when you go to, compared to a retail business. The Hotel Troy will be a luxury hotel, 101 rooms, distinct character, intentional design and decor, and personalized service. Due to intimate size, my staff can focus on delivering exceptional service. Our goal is not just to meet, but to exceed every guest's expectation in a professional and gracious manner. Our goal is to provide service, service, service with the feel of luxury. We believe that the town needs a luxury boutique hotel. You have great hotels in this city. However, they're all large, they all look alike, they're all brands. There's not an independent boutique hotel in Pacific, and I believe that there is a market for it. Our rates will be a little bit higher than the rest of them, but the service can be higher. Our, what's going to make us difference between, what's the difference between us, for example, and our competition? Besides the service and the design, we have the amenities. We're going to spend a lot of money on our custom bathroom amenities, shampoo, his conditioners, lotions. I know they might seem significant to some, but a lot of people actually, when they go to a hotel, they actually appreciate it. Our linen are T300 linen. Most hotels use T180. So T300 is the best quality linen that you could ever buy. Our beds, custom-made beds, our mattresses, our sleeper dream mattresses, that very few hotels actually use. A lot of hotels advertise it, but they don't actually use it. So we're going to be actually using them. Complimentary breakfast, and it's not going to be your typical continental breakfast that you get in chain hotels, it's going to be more, a little bit more on the healthier side. That's our focus, to offer something a little bit different than the rest. So you're not going to get the regular continental breakfast that you would get at the Sheraton, for example, or the Embassy Foods, you're going to get something a little different than this. Technology, all our, all our rooms will be equipped with 55-inch LED TVs. They're not going to be the small ones that you find in most hotel rooms right now, so 55 is going to be the smallest. People actually enjoy it when they go to a hotel room. Obviously, I like people hanging out on the bar than being in the room, but being in the room, you're going to have a 55-inch LED TV. Breakfast can be complimentary, as I said. Concierge service, all our staff members are going to be our concierge service. So in a lot of the hotels, you go in there and, you know, you'll ask the front desk person and it's like, hmm, you know, let me get somebody to help you, or I'll get the concierge to help you. Our staff, from housekeeping to front office to management, will be trained to provide the service that the guests will expect. Basically, you ask us for something, we will deliver it. That's the bottom line. This is, this is what makes us different from a regular chain hotel. This is what makes us different from the Marriott, makes us different from... This is what makes us different from the Marriott's, makes us different from the Holiday Hens, from the Sheratons. So we are going to be completely different approach to service. We're going to elevate the service. 24-hour gym. Our restaurant is going to be a high-end burger restaurant. Our main menu is going to be based on a very selective burger menu. However, we're going to offer a couple of other side dishes that goes, goes along with it. We want it, why burgers? Because everybody likes a burger. Everybody eats a burger. And figured that, I want to make it the best burger place in the state. Forget about Parsippany. I want to make it the best burger place in the state. I want to be talk of the town about it. Stylish bar and lounge. Obviously, we're very small, we're very intimate, so we're not going to get the crowd, the large crowd. And we don't want the large crowd. We want it to be very intimate. We want it to be very service-oriented. We want to offer the best cocktails in town. We want to offer the best scene in town. And we want to be able to provide our guests, primarily our guests, the best service they could ever have.
And takeout, you're not doing takeout?
Definitely not takeout. I was going to go to that, to answer your question. Definitely not doing takeout. That's not what we're about. Obviously, if somebody's eating and they want to take it to their room, or they'll take it home with them, obviously they take it, but we're not doing any takeout orders. Our ballroom is going to be 150-seat ballroom. Ideally, it's going to be 125 guests in the ballroom, and it's going to be small birthday parties, retirement parties, social events, fundraisers. Anything that, basically that we'll be able to, we'll be able to provide service for, will be now. Another question that might come up, is the ballroom accessible to the public and not just to the hotel guests? Yes, but mostly it's going to be for hotel guests. Just because, you know, usually they go hand-in-hand. Now, if there's a political fundraiser, if there is a graduation, if there is a retirement party from the community, obviously we'd welcome that. And that's going to be our shoulder business, and that's what we're going to be counting on. So it's not just serving the hotel guests, it's serving the community as well. Staffing. If I'm going too fast, please let me know. Staffing. We're 100, we're 101-room hotels, so my staff is not going to be a large staff. In the morning, we're going to have 73 shifts, three people. Nine to five, additional 10 people. Three to 11, it winds down to eight people. And then 11 to 7, the overnight shift, we're going to have four people. Obviously, if we have an event in the ballroom, we're going to have additional, five or six additional staff members for the ballroom space. Management's on staff 24/7. So whoever's going to be working the front desk is going to be trained as a manager. Is going to be responsible for whatever happens in the hotel. In the hotel business, I learned one thing, that once you become a hotelier, you're a hotelier. So I'm on-call 24/7. If I'm not in the building, I'm on-call 24/7. And I'm going to be present in, in the hotel 24/7, so I'm always going to be around. Deliveries, I know that was a question that we had, that you'd like to know about. Two times a week, a van will pick up and drop off linen. The linen will be cleaned off-site. And basically, two times a week, a van will come and pick up dirty linen and will deliver the fresh linen to us. And ideally, we'd like to see that before 8:00 AM. However, if there's any objection to that, we can always work around with the vendor that we're going to be using to deliver anytime. But for operational-wise, the best thing is for, excuse me, 8:00 in the morning. Food delivery is once a week, and it's a refrigerated van. We're going to have a very limited menu, so we're not going to have a dining menu, so we're going to be, we don't require a lot of deliveries when it comes to our food. However, that's going to be done once a week. Hotel supplies, shampoos, conditioners, toilet paper, tissue paper, paper goods, garbage bags, twice a week via a minivan. And that's what, usually, that's what we usually do. Security cameras will be installed by each elevator, lobby, public space, and by each exit. And it's going to be monitored 24 hours by a monitoring station, off-site monitoring station. Our goal, and my goal, is to provide the township president a product that you guys are going to be proud of. Be an outstanding member of the community, become an active member in its growth and prosperity. I'd like to join the Chamber of Commerce, get to know our police and fire department officials, and most important, hire local talent. Nobody knows the town more than the locals, and I'm sure there's going to be plenty of people that would, that would love to work for us. And we want to be able to team up with the local talent to hire local talent. That's extremely important to me. Support the township in any way possible, become a sponsor of township events and activities. Competition is always good, and I'm, I'm very competitive, and that's what makes us successful. However, partnering with local businesses is very important to us as well. To team up with the local businesses, to help each other grow, and helping the community.
Who is your, your target market? I mean, in terms of who are you really trying to appeal to, say, at your hotel?
Sure. Sure. Parsippany, the town of Parsippany, basically, is the occupancy rate for hotels based on the market study that was done. It's running at 73, 74% for the year. And the average rate right now for the city is around $160, $170. Obviously, the rates are seasonal. We want to be able to market, A, to the locals, to people that are coming in, visiting the residents of the township. So once, this is our primary goal. There's plenty of business coming in, from visitors coming in to visiting family members. So, because we are intimate, because we are 100 rooms, this is going to be our primary market. The secondary market, obviously, anybody that wants to come and visit the city and be in this location for whatever, whether it's business or leisure, however, it's going to be the high end. So, you know, I'm not going to compete with the Embassy Suites. I'm not going to compete with the Sheraton. I'm going to be a step above it. And the rate is going to dictate it, and this is how it works. So, you know, if somebody goes to Expedia and they're going to see, for example, the Embassy Suites selling for $150, I'm going to be a little bit higher. Certain days, obviously, I'll be lower with discounts. However, one thing, that because we are intimate and because we are a community-based hotel, the community, any, any member of the community that have any family members coming in that will book directly with the hotel will get a 15% discount, and this is how we are a community-based hotel first.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
There are members of the board having questions. Mr. Mealy?
If a, if a guest at 5:00 in the morning wanted coffee, would your concierge service accommodate them?
Coffee's going to be offered 24/7.
Is it also in the, in the rooms themselves? Sometimes they're in the rooms.
We can have it in the rooms, but I prefer to have it in the lobby, but if it's, that's not a option. We can have it, we can have coffee machines in the rooms. However, I find it a little bit more personalized when they actually eat in the lobby.
And what about the operation of the restaurant itself? Are there any specific hours?
Sure. The restaurant's going to be open, well, restaurants officially is going to be open for dinner. However, for breakfast, the restaurant per se is not open, but the kitchen is open for the breakfast.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Other members of the board have any questions? Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you for all the information. Appreciate it. Did you say the conference center would be, would be able to be rented out? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Reporters and stuff?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I thought I heard you sit down.
Yep.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Other members of the board, Mr. Tadich?
Yeah, maybe you mentioned it, and I missed it. Would the restaurant be open for general public, who are not staying at the hotel?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then, so, I'd like to double-check, but is the parking accommodating all of the additional traffic because of that?
Yeah, we, we meet the parking requirement, as testified too by Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
Other members of the board, our professionals, Mr. Kangianno, do you have any?
Actually, I have one more. Is there a, a similar hotel that's anywhere near here to this operations? Like, if you say, oh, this is going to be similar to La, you know, in New York, or something, or...
I mean, in, in New York City, there are plenty.
Of these hundred-room hotels?
Yeah, there's, there are plenty of hotels. I mean, yes, there are plenty of boutique hotels in New York City still in operation. If, a lot of them actually converted to something else during COVID, and they're in progress of converting back to boutique hotels, yes. But boutique hotels are extremely popular for, basically, that's what they are, for service. You walk into, you know, you walk into a boutique, you get better service than you walk into a large department store. And that's the same concept.
Okay.
Other members, do you have any questions?
No. You touched on all my questions, so thank you.
Go ahead.
Alright, I have no questions. Are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
We have no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the board for its attentiveness, as always, for your questions. I won't regurgitate the testimony since you heard it fresh in your minds. I know there were a number of conditions that would be attached to any approval. We have no issue with any of the conditions that have been enumerated here this evening.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. In favor of this application this time. Also, hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Do I have anybody who wishes to say anything, or do we want to go right to a resolution?
Ignore each resolution.
Mr. Matthews sound like a volunteer.
I don't want to take this away from Mr. Mealy.
I'll do it if you wish, Mr. James.
That would be great.
I motion to approve the agenda for application number 23, colon, 508, Interstate Office Center, LP 8, Woodhollow Road, Block 736.1, Lot 1, Zone SED5, OVL7, Preliminary and final major site plan for a boutique hotel.
We have some conditions here that our attorney might wander us through.
I'll run through them. So if different signage is proposed, then that is outside of the township code, the applicant will come back before the board for approval. If the same, that same condition goes with the rooftop amenity.
Correct.
The applicant will provide six ADA spaces, including, plus additional ADA EVSE or make-ready spaces.
Correct.
Alright. And a stop bar will be added near the existing ADA spaces shown on the site plan. And a crosswalk will be installed diagonally toward the front door.
With, with appropriate signage.
Okay.
And we'll confer with Mr. Kangianno on that.
Alright. The applicant will confirm compliance with the ADA ramp and will adjust the sizes if needed.
Yeah, if that needs to be upgraded, we'll upgrade it.
Alright. The plan revisions include upgrading, updating the striping plan, accessible route with crosswalk, the EVSE or make-ready spaces, and the ADA spaces.
Yes.
And the trash gate will include, will be solid, either wood or vinyl. And I think that was everything.
That's all I have.
Second, Matt.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Tadich?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your time and attention, as always. Alright. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board at this time? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye, or leave. Good night, good night. See you all next time.
Oh, yeah.